Good evening. It's Wednesday, January 8, 2014. This is the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission. First order of business is the election of officers for 2014. Are there nominations for Chair?
I'll nominate Nelson.
Okay. Nelson Peterson has been nominated. Are there other nominations for Chair?
Second nomination, Nelson.
Thank you.
I would nominate Wendy, Mr. Kipadiza.
Okay.
Horse race.
I don't think I can nominate, I mean, second myself.
Second that. Okay, so we have two nominations. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close the nominations. Let's see, we need to do a vote such that we can be sure that Ann has the record that she needs. So let's do it by a show of hands. All in favor of Wendy as Chair, show your hand. Two, Ann. And all in favor of Nelson's Chair. Three. All right, thank you.
Sort of unfortunate boys versus the girls when there.
We could shout something about discrimination.
Very well.
Now, we need to elect a Vice Chair for the year. Are there nominations? I see Joel is nominating Wendy.
Second.
There's a second for that. Are there other nominations for Vice Chair? I'll close the nominations. If we can do this by acclamation, all in favor of Wendy as Vice Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay. Ann, I think if you show that as unanimous. And in the past, we have had a second Vice Chair. And at times, that has actually proved useful. I think I held the gavel twice last year.
Yeah, I would advise doing it.
Especially with having two vacancies.
Especially with the two vacancies right now.
I'd nominate Joel. Are you willing?
Are you willing, Joel?
I'm willing. I should indicate that I've served as Chair, first Vice Chair, or second Vice Chair at various times in the past, but generally not too onerous.
Are there other nominations for second Vice Chair? Hearing none, I'll close the nominations, and we can do this by acclamation. All in favor of Joel as second Vice Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. I think Ann, you could show that as unanimous. Thank you.
I think one time, I even served as Chair of a meeting just as the guy who'd done it before.
Done it in the past.
In the role as member, but had done it before.
Privateer.
All right. Our next order of business is approval of the minutes of December 11.
I have a motion from Debbie to approve.
Second from Kurt. Did anyone see any scritners or other issues that we needed to correct? Neither did I. Any other comments? All in favor of approving the minutes of November, or December 11? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Wendy is abstaining. Okay. So that passes with that one abstention. The next item is correspondence. Anything from staff? Anything from members for the good of the order? Okay.
Oh.
Yes.
It just occurred to me to ask, is there some reason that we start at 7:30? I wouldn't mind starting at 7:00 or something, half hour earlier, if that's feasible.
That's just been a historical meeting time that was the desired meeting time of members of the Commission. Sue Scotts, I think specifically in the past, maybe a couple others.
I think I used to push for it because with kids and wife working and so on, it worked conveniently. I'm now retired, I'm no longer gonna push for 7:30.
So that was the only reason. Everybody else meets at 7:00, this is really the only body that meets at 7:30. The City Council meets at 7:00, the Board of Adjustment meets at 7:00. It would be more consistent if they wished to meet at 7:00. I don't know if we want to poll the members that aren't present and see if they would have any potential conflicts.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind an extra half hour early, but I don't, it wouldn't break my heart to keep it at 7:30 either, so.
Can we do that online between meetings, and then maybe we would ratify it at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I would expect that if-
So we'd start at 7:30.
We'd start at 7:30 next meeting, and then any change would happen after that time.
Okay.
The only, I can make a work. It's a little tight because I teach studios, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and so it's get home and then jet here. But it's, yeah, I'll actually make a work, I'll just figure it out. Because I understand what you're talking about, it makes the meetings go late.
Occasionally, we do have public that is confused by the 7:30.
Yeah, true. It's hard to say whether it works better for getting people out or not, you know, I don't know.
Simplifying when we have the joint meeting, what time we're gonna meet at. The joint City Council meeting, because there's always that debate about Council meets on our day, but at their time.
A bit of a jam, you're too much.
Okay, so, Bill, you will help us do that between meetings?
Yep, we'll follow up.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you for that. We'll go on then to the Transportation Commission report.
Transportation Commission last met on December 12. Two main topics of the meeting. One was the bicycles on sidewalk topic. The Transportation Commission was tending toward trying to make the central blocks of Main Street a walk-your-bicycle zone. And that's probably not going to be in the form of an actual ordinance, partly because we're assured by police and so on that it's not likely to be a priority for enforcement, and it would be difficult to enforce anyway. But short of that, it is possible to designate the area that way in terms of signage. There's no ordinance to sign at the bottom of the sign, but just sort of working on the moral suasion. Nelson, before the meeting, was talking about the insignia that one puts on streets to designate that they're shared streets between bicycles and sidewalks. And the Transportation Commission is definitely in favor of using them on Main Street. Initially, I think this would probably apply only to Main Street, not to the parallel streets on either side. Also talking about various public education possibilities to, you know, working with the downtown businesses and other entities that are interested, and with the University of Idaho. The other main topic of the meeting was the same topic that we dealt with the day before, the Harvest Hills subdivision. And since I had already participated in this meeting, I was able to participate in the discussion the next day in that meeting. The Transportation Commission, as we were, was concerned about the lack of parking on the long stretch of roadway through there, and would like to see that addressed somehow in terms of the proposal. The Transportation Commission also brought up one other topic that was of concern to several people, and that's the Jansen Street connection that clearly is going to be a major thoroughfare for children, especially young, very young bicyclists, heading for schools.
Right.
So there's a concern that the design of Jansen recognized that traffic. The Transportation Commission meets again tomorrow at 4:00, and there'll be further discussion of bicycles on sidewalks, and it will be some review of the circumstances surrounding the pedestrian accident that occurred at Steiner and Main a number of weeks back. And it's an item that we've had on our agenda and never seem to have gotten to, the topic of the Ring Road. Assuming we'll have time to get to it.
Joel.
Mainly a historic review of what went into the design as it currently exists.
Okay. Since Scott is here, could you elaborate in any way what Transportation was thinking about making Jansen Street more, designed more aware or friendly to the children bicycling, and just children in general cutting through there?
Well, possibly, possibly figuring out how to have an actual designated bicycle lane, at least on the side heading uphill, where the bicycles will be traveling slowly. That is presumably the east side of-
East side, northbound.
North.
Yeah, coming up from Third.
Yeah.
Up onto that.
The challenge is that-
Could be a challenge.
Well, the grade, the grade is likely to be 10% or slightly over, just to make the elevation gain from where Damon currently sits on the top and where Third has to be at the bottom. And so, you know, we have to kind of discuss to staff, possibly looking at widening of the sidewalk, in that kids may be actually pushing the bike up the sidewalk, and maybe there could be an opportunity to put in, rather than your standard residential four-foot-wide sidewalk going to a maybe five-to-six-foot-wide sidewalk that could accommodate higher levels of pedestrian and kids pushing bikes and that additional traffic. So that's something that certainly we've kind of discussed informally amongst staff. The recognition, Transportation Commission will go to the City Council, so the key of City Council will have the opportunity to consider that. The Jansen extension, as currently proposed, would be a 28-foot-wide road that couldn't have parking on one side essentially, which would preclude bike lanes. So in that configuration, you would have to go to, actually, none of our residential street standards have bike lanes. It's not until you get to a collector street that bike lanes are generally a component of the adopted street standards. You could do, Sherrill's could be an opportunity in an area like that to denote that, you know, and not just Jansen, but continuing on to Mosher down the hill, as you had, either the D or kind of there's a shortcut through that comes into the back of the playground there, McDonald's, that maybe a route like that that becomes heavily utilized might include both widen walk for those who'd be on the sidewalk, which I think predominantly would be the majority of elementary school kids are probably riding on the sidewalk, would be my guess. Probably gonna see fewer of them in the roadway. And so maybe the best opportunity or best solution there would be to widen one of the sidewalk sides to accommodate that additional traffic. Because I do think we'll see kids probably pushing or walking bikes up the sidewalk. Now, coming down, might be a different story.
Yeah, really.
So would that perhaps give up the tree lawn there, and essentially pave the tree lawn?
It would just, the tree lawn would be eight feet in width with a four-foot sidewalk, so there's a possibility that the tree lawn goes to six feet to accommodate for that additional two feet. So it wouldn't require its deletion or elimination. It just might possibly require its narrowing slightly in that area.
Okay, good. So I'm glad that you were here to have heard that feedback from Transportation. We're up to open microphone, which is the time to remind the members of the public who are not here tonight, that this is their opportunity to come and give us thoughts that they may have on matters that are not on the agenda or currently pending before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Unless the two of you would like to step to the microphone, we'll move on to number seven, approval of relevant criteria, Harvest Hills addition preliminary subdivision plan, I noted in here, Bill, the way you addressed the on-street parking issue, which is on page four or five at the bottom, number six, other. And what I thought was interesting for me to know is that parking is not a requirement. There are no requirements under city code to provide on-street parking within residential subdivisions. It's just an interesting ob-
It is. I mean, there-
I mean, I may strip it from one side occasionally on a, on, let's say, six.
Yeah, for the-
To facilitate narrower street and higher volumes and things like that, but-
Right. If you look at the zoning code, it's structured to require off-street parking. So there are standards for parking that we've provided on the private property because the presumption is on-street parking may not always be available. So in a situation like this where you have a collector street or an arterial where on-street parking isn't available, then that parking can be accommodated in the private property. And so, there's no specific requirement. Our residential street standards do have on-street parking. So when you look at our street standards, it would state that a, you can choose two residential street standards, one's either a 28-foot-wide residential street with parking on one side, or one's a 34-foot-wide street with parking on both. In this instance, we actually have a street that's designated on the thoroughfare plan as ultimately a collector, and that has a different standard that does not accommodate for on-street parking unless you widen it. So the principle, you end up with slightly wider travel lanes, you have the bike lanes, and then essentially it's curb and tree lawn. So there really is no provision for the minimum standard to have on-street parking. There are options to widen that behind the bike lane if you want to add on-street parking, but there is no requirement that it be done. And so, it is something that traditionally, it's somewhat unusual, but not, I mean, it's actually fairly typical in some of the older parts of town where it's been developed as residence neighborhood, and then streets have kind of morphed into over time into collector-level streets. Predominantly, when we're looking at new subdivision, we generally don't have street homes or lots that are fronted on, or maybe they're fronted, but they're rear-loaded off an alley like on White, or they're, they take their access from a secondary street like Shelby and Joseph. And so you have through lots that back up to that collector street but don't actually gain their access from. That provides that on-street parking in the alley or on the street that they're being served from. It just happens that there is no opportunity to do that here. The street's designated as a collector, and it kind of, that is a situation that ends up as a result. But, you know, there is nothing within the code that requires it, so, you know, the intent there is to clarify in the written record that this isn't necessarily a deficiency or a conflict with city code. But it is a, I guess, what I felt the Commission was an item of concern for kind of the general operation and function of a neighborhood to be able to have parties, events, and guests, visitors, to have a location to be able to park within close proximity. And there are many other situations, oftentimes where you have side streets that are maybe in closer proximity, and in this segment, you really don't have that mountain view to essentially, the Jansen is where you, you know, is a fairly long stretch where you don't have that opportunity. So it is a little bit unique, and that's just, you know, purely a function of the property, the topography and how the adjacent sites have been developed. There really is no opportunity to try to create that.
Is that a topic, forgetting about this particular development, but is it a topic that we should address, that in new developments, is there be some requirement for additional parking if on a collector or arterial street? If, in fact, it is, has facing residences and the length exceeds X feet? It seems like it would be something that would be worthwhile addressing in the development standards.
What we have kind of drafted in the subdivision design standard draft that we're working on would actually try to push design to where there would be alley access, or they'd be, those homes would be served by those adjacent secondary residential streets and not have a direct access situation like we have here. That is, this is a fixed situation because of its constraints, but we're looking at trying to, as we look at greenfield and new developments where there's greater room to lay out that subdivision and design it where you have a collector or arterial level street, to look at having either those front the street and have a rear alley that provides both access, trash, you know, removes driveway approaches onto those higher class of streets, those collectors and arterials, and then provides that opportunity for that off-street parking. And so that's what we have drafted in the code. There may be situations where it's unavoidable, such as this situation.
Given the topography on this particular one, that doesn't work.
There's really nothing else that you can do.
So it seems like there could possibly be, in the standards we're developing, some clause.
Yeah, and that gets to, if you look at Southgate Third Edition, there were, there are two streets in that, and it's predominantly residential subdivision. White Avenue is an arterial, Joseph is a collector, and those were developed with either alley access to serve that, for that secondary street. And that's what we generally would expect to see when you have a larger area that encompasses a street of that class. In this case, the property is obviously very narrow, can't accommodate that, topography can't accommodate that, so.
And at least the collector streets, isn't there, I mean, a lot of the research shows that without on-street parking, people speed up.
Right.
Because they don't have the perceived closure on the street. So are we really moving towards the right goal? I guess that would be my question in a residential subdivision.
Well, if you think about, if the standard is to accommodate the bike lanes, the section from the parked car, from curb to curb is gonna be the same.
Right.
You'd just be adding asphalt width behind the bike lanes. So possibly, possibly the effective width of the roadway to the driver would still look somewhat the same because where the cars are would essentially be the curb line behind the sidewalk. And so it doesn't really, it doesn't change the effective width of the roadway.
Well, I was thinking more of allowing cars to park on-street parking or not. That's really what I was thinking.
But would you retain a bike lane?
In that circumstance.
Because that's where you run in situation of, of the roadway width, let's say, the outside edge of the bike lanes, which would effectively be the curb line in this situation. If that just becomes another parking lane, the effective visual width of the roadway remains consistent. Now, if you were, wanted to do traffic calming and the bike lanes were not there and on-street parking provided, that would, you know, I think that would then effectively close in that roadway. But we're, you know, in that collector standard, we're trying to provide that bike lane facility. That's really what pushes that, that visual width remains somewhat consistent. Now, there's still some calming measures of, I think, of having the vehicles there, where people tend to kind of think, well, is somebody gonna come out and open the door? And so you're kind of naturally, naturally a little bit more conscious, even if you have the same effective width, but it may not be a significant difference.
I guess I'd like to see some further discussion of it. Probably it's something that might be done in Transportation Commission rather than in this Commission. But I guess.
Yeah, it seems like this is getting pretty close to like a worst-case scenario where there's no side street or anything. It seems like it would be worth it at least a couple of years from now to go back in and just see how it's working. If it's turned into, oh my God, never do this again, sort of. Left.
And it's, I mean, it's just gonna be the inconvenience to the future homeowner that they have to live with, either working with the neighbors, say, hey, can I borrow a spot or two in your driveway, having some folks over, or accommodating parking some other fashion, or just telling folks, you do have to park at, you know, several blocks away and walk here. The street's gonna function fine.
Yeah.
The roadway's gonna function fine, but it's just going to be an inconvenience to the owners. And that's just, you know, something we look at, is from neighborhood character and function and operation to providing for that full range of activities, is something we like to try to do.
In order to get something on the table, I move acceptance of the opposed reasoned statement.
Yes, I hadn't, I thought it was, it was just interesting to find you addressing that there. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion of this as opposed to the larger issue of roadway standards? Okay, well then, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the reasoned statement? Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And abstentions? And Ann, you can count me, so it's unanimous.
Who seconded that?
I think I did.
It's under you.
Thank you. Yes, Joel, I don't know the process for recommending to Transportation, but you bringing it up would address that. And a broader version of the problem might also be that we may have some other street, existing street, that, I'm thinking right now of six, where we stripped parking on one side, but could come to a point of stripping parking on the other side. And there we wouldn't have necessarily the option to re-engineer in some other way. So how do you think about all of those things?
Well, I think six has never, has only, always been on one side. There was actually a proposal to remove it on that one side, but the Council chose not to act on. There may have been one limited area because of the site distance away from intersection that they did make an adjustment.
Right at the crest, yeah.
But the thought was, should we? And the ultimate decision of the Council was not to strip it and actually stripe a center line that was offset to help guide-
Move it over.
-motors, and then some small adjustments. There were some reductions on one side in some areas that were viewed as being a safety concern. Because that rode with too, a lot of these older streets are only 30 feet in width, and so if you look at parking on both sides, that takes up 16 feet of roadway width, you're left with 14 feet to try to work with, which is not-
A little tight.
Not a comfortable passing distance on a street that has 6,000 to 7,000 vehicles a day down it.
Yeah. All right, we're up to number eight, the review of ADU project.
Eight is gonna be fairly brief, I think, just kind of recap since we're past the holiday period. We kind of ran through and have been talking about the ADU situation for six months or so here, last year, last half last year. And we left it that we were gonna wait till kind of after the holiday period, and we would begin some public outreach and public input efforts. We talked through kind of maybe how we thought it would fit, some general ideas of size or location and scale, and then we, you know, debated the design component of it around a fair amount, and then ultimately, what I recall is, we just decided not to really define everything just yet, but let's see what the public thinks and provide some summary of the research that's been conducted, conduct kind of an informal open house setting where we can invite people in, talk about the, what ADUs are, what other communities are doing to address those, how could they possibly be addressed in Moscow, and really try to get that early input before anything really gets more formulated down in paper to where it's, looks like it's halfway complete. So we are targeting that for the upcoming meeting of January 22nd, so it'll be a little bit of a different meeting, it'll really just be in a open house session that we would conduct. And we probably would, it might make sense to do the open house from 5:00 to, or 6:00 to 7:00, and have the meeting pick up at 7:30 from there to try to catch that on the way home, folks. Sometimes I think it's a lot easier to intercept people on the way home from work than try to get them back out of the house again once they're, once they're home. So we're gonna do some public outreach, media and other communications, Facebook and that, and then we'll staff that like we do many of our other open house sessions with some poster stations, and I would encourage any members of the Commission to attend that if you can. We'll get more details out by email, but we'll get the time set down.
if you can. We'll get more details out by email, but we'll get the time set down with us, five or 5:30, and get that nailed down and have an opportunity to really talk with citizens that may be interested in the topic and get some good information and input. And then we can convene the meeting at 7:30 and talk about what we heard from that and decide kind of next direction.
Presented by Hank Warden of Edward Jones.
North West Public Radio, KRFA 91.7 Moscow Pullman.
Something write up in the paper. They'd like to have an opportunity to provide input. So having a second iteration that would come some two to three weeks or four weeks after the first might be a good way to, to ensure that people have more than one opportunity to come before we get into, you know, the hearing process and, and the more formalized process there. So we'll be working on developing that, and we'll get you more details out via email.
Is there any way to invite the daily news?
Yes.
In a way that they would?
My intent is I will contact our new City Beat reporter and invite them in before with the idea of trying to get an article timed like the day of. It's always nice if they come out.
Oh, that'd be perfect.
If it comes out in the morning of the day of. And so I'm sure we'll be able to work on that because that gets people right there that day. They think of it and make a note to stop by on the way home. And then possibly follow up after that ahead of the second one.
Great, great. So there'll probably be another public input section of February 22.
Yeah, kind of mid, second meeting of Jan, yes. So that's what I expect.
Okay. All right. Discussion of Commission projects for 2014.
Okay, and this is just, this is a presentation from May of last year, so about seven months ago when we had the joint meeting with the city council. But as we turn the beginning of the year, I think it's kind of helpful to kind of look ahead to the work plan for the coming year, review kind of the goals and projects that were identified by the council and the commission during that joint meeting. And then also solicit ideas from the commission about other things you would like to see us take a look at this year so we can kind of put them on the work plan and get the year scheduled out. I'll skip through the kind of this beginning. These were just reviewing some of the goals from prior joint meetings, but there is a final slide here that kind of has them all on one. So we talked about, we had some prior goals. There were actually five that were identified in the prior joint meeting with the commission and the city council. So we had the industrial park master plan study, the large retail enterprise ordinance amendments, the continuation of the city-initiated rezones, unified code project and legacy crossing were the standing ones. As we looked at the council's goals, in 2011, we had a beautification plan for city entrances. We had a review of our RV parking standards for RV park developments. In the 2012 council goals, we picked up, or the council identified a goal to expand the perceived downtown area on Main Street from E to the South Cuplet. And two was to adopt the overlay zone for legacy crossing urban renewal district. And the third in 2012 was to review the condition used for permit and economic impacts, the requirements of the large retail establishment ordinance. And in 2013, when the council established their goals, the two that remained, there really weren't new goals established in 2013. The council's effort was trying to consolidate existing goals to try to get those accomplished. So the beautification plan for city entrances remained for a 13 goal, as did the expansion of the perceived downtown area on Main Street from E to the South Cuplet. So those were kind of the two in the 13 session. If we looked at the ones that we have completed, so the industrial park study and the master plan has been completed. So now Jeff Jones is working on forwarding that plan for development. The LRE ordinance amendments were completed. The bulk of the city-initiated rezones were completed. Legacy crossing overlay zone was completed. We did review the RV park standards and determined that there really were no changes that were required at that time. As I mentioned, the overlay zone was done and the CUP and the LRE was completed. So that really left us with three remaining projects during our joint meeting in May of last year that had not yet been completed. There were several other topics that had been discussed by the commission recently at that time, the urban ag ordinance, ADUs that we just talked about, some possible standards for multifamily development for infill projects. And I discussed at one point in time the review of our existing university district to see whether we ought to be modifying how that is structured. And the finalists that came out of the joint session was the unified code project obviously was continued as a priority. The second was to develop a beautification plan for the city entryways. The third was expansion of the perceived downtown area on Main Street from E to the north, south, she, she, north cuplet. And the fourth was to continue exploration on the ADU, including the standards that would accompany that. And then the fifth that was added at the joint meeting was stormwater management treatment as it relates to private development. So that was kind of at the end of the joint meeting with the city council in May. Those were identified as being the five projects for the commission to work on over the course of the following year. The unified code project is ongoing, so we are, we've got some early drafts. They're circulating around right now. The subdivision lot line adjustment, lot division code is working through the Public Works Department for their review, as we have their comments, and they'll come back to the commission, the commission's review. But that project is currently ongoing. The beautification plan for the city entrances is also underway. So I gave a report not too long ago on the status of that project. We've had a steering committee that's been working on that project, and we have a landscape architect that's working for the city on behalf, Del Hatch from Welsh Comer. We have some initial concept designs that we developed in early December, and we were going to have a second open house meeting on those designs in December. And we ran into some concerns from ITD. We've had ITD on the steering committee, but it went, we had Ken Helm has been on our steering committee, but when he took the concept designs through their permit review committee, they expressed some concerns. And so we've been working through those, and we're setting up a meeting here in the next week to get together and talk through a few of those items. But we really actually pulled in that expansion of the downtown area into that beautification project. So there's, there are street treat installations and some streetscape enhancements, really picking up at A, going all the way to the South Cuplet, and then actually kind of extending beyond that in front of the Rose Arch property as being, that core concept has been identified. So we really kind of pulled those two into one project. So that, that's underway. Once we kind of worked through a few of the concerns with ITD, we will be back to having a public open house to share the concept designs, receive input, then we'll further refine those designs, and those will get presented to the city council. So that project, I'm anticipating by, let's say, the latest April should probably be buttoned up and be able to be considered complete from status perspective. And then that will move into the council's budget process to see if the council wishes to try to fund some of the improvements that have been identified. ADU, I think we're well underway. I think we've got a good foundational background base. We have a good concept about how it could work, and we're into that public outreach and input stage. And again, I'm thinking that is in that kind of May to June timeframe. We should probably be to completion on that project. The stormwater management treatment is really kind of part of, I view as being part of the unified code, is part of the private development standards. It would be included in that. We have been somewhat waiting for a response from EPA. They've had our, our phase two stormwater program permit application for about two years now. And that application really spells out how we're going to work to come into compliance for the phase two NPDS stormwater requirements. And we, it's been in their hands for two years, partially because they've been trying to decide how to treat the University of Idaho. Whether, because our systems are interconnected in various locations. I think we had originally anticipated that we'd be under one permit that would cover the university and, you know, the city and the university as a component of the city. The university, I think, has expressed the desire to be a separate permit. And so how that gets managed and how do we look at compliance between the two entities has been something that's been discussed for a little while here, for about the last year. And we also received word from EPA just recently that actually they're, they're going to a general permit process now. And so rather than, and that's been kind of the general permit, they have an existing general permit for like construction projects. These are kind of the standardized practices you have to employ. When we were designated as a phase two community, we were told we had to provide a specific application that was unique to how we were going to approach the situation. And apparently, maybe that's become overwhelming to be able to administer, I suspect from EPA's perspective. And so now they're looking, going to general permits that would be somewhat generic and have the standards you need to comply with, or the actions you need to take, that all entities would have to take kind of in a more uniform fashion. And that that's probably going to take a year or so for them to work on development of that. So part of us, part of Public Works' hesitation of getting too far into the stormwater is trying to understand what, what the expectations or what the requirements are going to be. And so that still is, I think that's always considered to be a component coming that, that when those standards get identified, that that, you know, storm, not only the detention retention that we currently have right now, but the treatment is going to become a requirement for all private and ultimately public stormwater systems. So, but it may be that that element gets on hold until we get, understand what the new permit standards are going to be from EPA. And that could realistically be another year or two before we know what those are. So just a long-winded explanation about where that is. So anyhow, but those were the five projects. The two and three are well underway under the entryway project, and four, you know, I think we're well underway as well on that. So those, those three really are, I think, are making good progress, which then leaves us time to work on the unified code project. And stormwater itself probably will be, have to be on hold for a short time. As we look ahead again at 2014, so of course, the unified code project is important, subdivision code update has been the one that we have focused on, and currently have a draft and review by Public Works. That'd be followed by development standard update that would include storm provisions pending that EPA action. We're not going to hold it for that action, but, so those are the parking lot development standards, landscaping standards and so forth in, in that area. We have those drafted. I'm just waiting for Public Works to kind of get through the subdivision to then be able to review the, those development standard actions. That would then be followed by the zoning district updates, and then any cleanup and reorganization to kind of put all back together at the end of the project. So that's kind of how I envision over the course of the next year, we will be working on those components. And we have discussed in the past having a kind of technical advisory committee that would be representative somewhat of the development community that would take a look at and give us input and feedback, so that the commission can consider that with respect to its recommendations ultimately to the city council. And so that process will begin this year. Another item that wasn't on the list on the prior page, because it really wasn't a topic of discussion, is area city impact review. And so that still is on our list that we have conducted the joint meeting between the city council and the Board of County Commissioners. We discussed the area city impact. There seems to be an interest to potentially adjust the boundary in certain locations where future development is likely to occur, as well as consideration of adoption of the county's Ag Force District with maybe some modified version of their land division standards to make it more consistent with, with county rules, with Ag Force being, district being the vast majority of the area city impact area. And so that will be a project this year that will need to get completed. And so this body is charged with reviewing and providing recommendations to the city council on that topic. So we'll be working through that over the course of the next couple of months, and then enable us to move forward. The, we are kind of waiting for that transportation plan to be completed, and its ultimate recommendations with regard to the ring road to see if that has any impact upon city's policy decisions, because that obviously is a hot button item between the city and the county, and two residents and the area city impact especially. And so that is being modeled, the relative benefit with respect to the cost will be modeled as part of the transportation plan. And so there'll be some information that'll come out of that effort that should help give the city some better information to make policy decisions upon. And, and we'll see how that impacts potentially area city impact matters as well. So that, I believe, should be wrapping up this spring. I don't have the specific timeframe, but I'd have to say by May. I'm assuming that's going to be wrapped up and completed. And so that, that is kind of somewhat delaying the ACI discussion right now. We met, we have discussed it with commissioners. They're well aware this, this study is underway, and that we need to kind of see the conclusions of that before we formally adopt any changes to the area city impact. So that one, we'll be, be making some reviews with respect to land use and boundaries. And we'll have to see kind of what the outcome of the ring road discussion is there. As I mentioned, the ADU project is underway, moving into the public input, followed by ordinance formulation, and then the hearing process. And again, the city entry beautification project, those two items are wrapped up into that, and will be addressed and completed by April or May of this year. So those are the major items that I kind of saw looking ahead to the upcoming year. And then I just wanted to open it up for ideas from the commission about things that the commission would like to see us take a look at. I will say that the, the council will likely, the mayor and the council likely will be conducting some goal setting or strategic planning sessions later this year. And I don't know if it's going to happen this spring or what timeframe. And so certainly, this is based upon kind of where we are right now. There could be projects or initiatives that come out of that process that would come to the commission that we'd be looking at. But those, I'm not expecting to come until a little bit later this year. So this, this would cover at least the first six to nine months of the year for the commission.
Bill, when we held the hearing to rezone the couple lot parcel that the county owns, there was, took to general business, if I recall correctly. There was a certain amount of angst on the part of the commission about that zone and the potential uses in that zone, and imagining the scenario where the county to shift and just sell that property, having just rezoned it to bring general business much further into the residential neighborhood. And it seems to me, at some point in that process, I heard the idea, what if we had a civic, institutional, some sort of new zone that we don't have right now, that would allow a rezoning hearing rather than just have it as own general business fall into private hands and go somewhere else? Is that the sort of topic that might either be considered up there in part of one, or how would we, if that was worth, how would we, so I want a charger head to do that, but rather sound out, is this a path that's worth looking at and interest into the council?
I would expect that it would fall under item number one, just like the university district update would fall under item number one, is just kind of the general review and update to the city zoning districts. So the creation of a new district, the review of existing districts, I mean, there are, in our view, there are opportunities for light industrial slash commercial district that doesn't exist today, that is something that we would like to have as a tool for the southeast industrial park project. And so we are expecting that there'll, there may be, and there may be some deletion of residential districts. There may be some insertion of some commercial districts and possibly looking at a institutional district and doing some research on that topic as well can be included as part of that.
Given the feeling that was expressed at that meeting, I think it might be interesting to nudge that thought forward a little bit.
Because it does seem odd that civic and institutional and educational buildings are general business.
Are in general.
I mean, absolutely.
And I suppose then we would end up needing to understand what were the implications of going back over and.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, are there still other of the city-initiated rezones that we really need to clean up still?
I think we need to review two corridors. We have the North Main and the Third Street corridor that are two that I think ought to be reviewed. So, and that's really the extension of motor business from A Street north. And whether there's, that's the appropriate designation for E Street to let's say the south of the Main Hill. Looking at trying to maintain that street wall, try to look to promote more infill development opportunities that are more consistent with the form of Main. And so looking at what are the appropriate designations there. We have the same situation extending from downtown out the Third Street corridor, let's say to Llewellyn, that's, that we have a lot of buildings close in. You know, it's, it's not CB because you need parking because there isn't, you're not near available public supplies, but maybe it's a UMC or it's a GB on those two corridors where you don't have the setback requirements. It provides more building opportunity, and you help maintain and reinforce that street wall. So there are corridors down Third and North Main are probably the ones that we have viewed as being ones that should be reviewed. And probably the two last significant ones. And we've kind of, we've kind of wrapped the, the North Main review into the city entry beautification project as an add-on component. So I've tasked my staff to do a inventory of existing uses and comparison to various zoning options, whether that's GB, UMC, or some other designation, and what might be the best fit. So we'll have that coming to the commission here in the next month or so.
Well, it seems like we have a reasonably full plate.
We do. But I just want to make sure that, you know, if there are any other topics of interest to the commission that the commission wished to discuss, we could certainly.
I have the feeling more topics will reveal themselves.
They always do. They always do. Yes. So that's kind of the work plan that we're going to be working off. So that's kind of the work plan that we're going to be working off this year.
Question, where are we with respect to potential industrial developed property?
Yes, there you go. Okay. So I'm sure you cut it out. We need, so we completed the planning effort. We were faced with a fairly large floodplain mitigation cost. And to really try to shift the floodplain floodway in the area that had been targeted and identified. We had been working, and at the same time, we also have been doing some environmental remediation assessments. So as part of the brownfield program, there was an assessment about 17 acres of the site to make sure that there weren't any environmental constituents of concern that could cause difficulty in development. That came back clean and that was just completed last fall. We have been in discussions with the consultants on the airport reconstruction runway realignment project because there's a wetland mitigation that needs to be completed as part of that project. We confirmed that we could be a receiving area for constructed wetlands. We actually could be constructing a floodplain mitigation component of that project that could help absorb that, you know, $1.5 million cost upfront. Now, the, the rules changed and the match requirement has now doubled on that project and it's gone from $3 million to $6 million. And that's caused, you know, some difficulty for the airport board and then City Pullman in Moscow to try to decide how, how can we tackle that additional $3 million in cost? The, the initial $3 million was, was viewed as being fairly achievable. That additional three is a really difficult hurdle. And, and that funding has really been set aside and then there's, there's $64 million that has been targeted for that project that FAA has earmarked for that project. As soon as, I mean, 2015, 2016 was really the initial anticipated construction date. So we were kind of anticipating that that actually might cycle well with the wetland mitigation work that'd be done here that could help us with the flood mitigation. We've done the environmental assessment and now we've, we've at least taken those parts, pieces of the puzzle and have taken that down. And then we can move into the development of the park. Really, one of the big things, there is going to need to be some sort of funding that goes into that project. And if it's going to be some form of grant source, whether CDVG or RCBG or EDA, that means there has to be job creation that comes along with that project. So ultimately that means you need to have a company at hand that's looking to relocate that can commit to that job creation that then can bring the half million or so that we can get from a CDVG application. And so we've actually been working and talking with one potential firm that could be a fit. We need to reengage with the property owners and get everything kind of back on course. And we've been talking about mapping out about essentially a two-year plan of all these pieces that need to kind of come into play to be able to move that project forward. So we are, Jeff and I are back actively engaged this year, this spring to really get this kind of, see if we can get alignment because this, you know, the folks we're talking with are kind of a three-year relocation, so it all would kind of fit well with our anticipated horizon of trying to pull that together. So there are a lot of pieces to it and we are actively working on it. So if you were to say, you know, in that two to three year horizon, I would guess.
So in terms of potential industrial land, at the moment, our focus is on the proposed park, industrial park.
It has been, yes.
Is it a larger conversation that should occur?
To look for other locations or?
Well, we've, we've talked about it intermittently for 20 years, I guess.
At this point, there's a lot of mechanics of working with the parties involved to look at trying to lay it out. If there are other locations that we should be looking at or considering for that opportunity, then certainly that could be a broader conversation.
Yeah.
Right now, we've kind of identified that 78 acres as being kind of the best or most suitable location for that type of use. And I still think that's probably the case. There may be other opportunities with the Thorn Creek project and the old 95 alignment too for those types of larger industrial type users.
That was one that I was thinking of, yeah.
So, so that kind of household south end is really the area that we would tend to target for that kind of user.
And I guess it's not really a great deal we can do with Thorn Creek project until, until we have an alignment.
That's another project that's kind of in lingo at the moment, yes.
Okay, anything else?
I just have a little question and I'm not sure whose jurisdiction it falls under, but I've had a lot of people ask me what happened in front of the library with, for the pedestrians going down First Street. And I realize the first construction of that whole ramp system was a piasco and they had to redo it, but now pedestrians are literally forced onto the street. I, being a person who, I mean, yeah, who walks down that street every day. It's like you come to, it's, and is that, I mean, it's impacting the city sidewalk, so.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was a city project, so the city actually constructed it.
Okay.
The city was under a consent order from the Department of Justice for ADA access to that facility.
But it's, they have redentment access because it's coming from two places.
But we have, it has to come from the parking space. So, so the driver was an ADA stall. Our ADA stall is on street and I don't, I'm not intimately familiar with it, but, so the focus was an accessible route from that parking space.
So everybody else has to walk in the street?
Into the life. Well, you don't have to. You can walk the ramp and down.
Somebody's going to crash into that fence in the middle of the night. It's, if you've looked at that situation, take a look at it. It's one of the worst designs I've ever seen in my life, honestly.
Yeah, it's, that, so it was under.
But they missed on the topography initially with the initial design and had to redo it. Hodge did, didn't they? Or was that a city, wasn't that Hodge?
Well, Hodge was the engineering firm that did the work.
I don't mean Larry Emory, just that.
Yeah, I mean, the Hodgins Associates did the work. You know, initially it, the sidewalk came down and that dove down to.
Right, right. It missed the contour.
Well, it was known.
Yeah, oh.
I mean, it was, they had to keep that point up to get the ramp to get to the parking spot. What ended up is then the, the sidewalk has to meet the street and you ended up with about a 20% slope that was going to.
Because I've had a number of people who've walked down that street all the time to downtown ask me, what happened here? I said, I don't have a good answer for that, so I'll ask.
Yeah, and it's, it's something that's in the public works department, so if you want to talk with Kevin.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Kevin is the one that's, that is more familiar to the project. So that was a parks that does our facilities management, public works that managed that aspect. The focus was to provide an accessible route from an ADA stall to the building. And there is really no, I think they found.
I didn't realize there wasn't one in the parking lot because there is a ADA ramp that you could access from the parking lot.
To the back of the building?
No, to the front. One of the ramps comes off the side. There are two ramps that come off the side.
Right, there's, and they both, one comes down to.
One comes from the east.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, that I thought would do the job without the other one, which is problematic.
The only stall is on the north, is essentially on the north side of the building is where the ADA stall has been designated. So that was kind of the focus. The initial was to kind of fix the elevation at the parking stall that caused the dive. They needed to find some way to adjust that grade differential of where they needed to hold for the ramp, where the stall was and where the road was. The only way to, to make that an accessible grade was to do the ramp. So it does the switchback to get it down to the street level. And that's, that was essentially the, the solution that was identified to achieve.
It's definitely problematic for, for everybody else who uses that corridor. And so I was just wondering what jurisdiction that fell under.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be public works.
Anything else for the good of the order? Then we're adjourned.
Okay.